Right. Welcome, everyone. I now call this special meeting of the King of the K C R H A Governing Committee to order. I am Roosevelt McCorder, and I'm serving in my role as designated alternate for the Live Experience Coalition. We start by grounding our work in our theory of change, which is if we create a homeless response system that centers people with lived experience, then we'll be able to focus on responding to the needs and eliminating inequities in order to end homelessness for all. This is a hybrid meeting, as all of our meetings will be going forward. So there is a physical location as well as a virtual access. And I want to thank Councilmember Claudia Balducci and the King County Council for letting us borrow their conference room today. Taj, will you please call the row?
Sure. Mayor Bruce Harrell.
Here.
Dow Constantine.
Here.
Councilmember Ed Prince. Councilmember Claudia Balducci.
Here.
Councilmember Joe McDermott.
Here.
Councilmember Lisa Erble.
Here.
Councilmember Andrew Lewis.
Present.
Mayor Nancy Backus. Mayor Angela Bernie. Roosevelt McCorder Jr.
Here.
And Lamont Green.
Here.
That concludes the row call.
I was trying to count like I lost count. Did we make quorum or not?
Yes, we do.
Okay, and we do have quorum. We acknowledge that the King County is located on the unceded traditional land of the Coast Salis peoples. We honor this land and its people, past and present. We are committed to directing funding and resources to organizations led by and in support of native and indigenous people. At every meeting, we like to, we reserve, excuse me, in every meeting, we reserve time for public comment. If you would like to provide public comment comments, use the raise hand feature in the Zoom, and Taj will call you in order after the consent agenda. We have one on that, one item on the consent agenda. And the meeting from our last December twenty second meeting. The Chair would entertain a motion to approve consent agenda.
We'll go through a little consent agenda. This is Balducci.
Thank you. Is there a second?
Second by Mayor Harold.
Thank you, Mayor. Any discussion? Discussion. All in favor, say aye.
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 Any opposed? Okay, the consent agenda is adopted. We're running right on time right now. We now have twenty minutes for public comment. If you wish to comment and have not already, raise your hand in Zoom or signed up in person, please do so now. Each person will have two minutes to comment, and we ask that each at the comments be related to today's agenda. We will start with the people on Zoom and then move to the people in the room. Public comment is now open. Taj, please call on people for public comment.
Taj, you're muted.
One second. The first person that we have for public comments is going to be George Scarrola. One second. Sean, do you mind taking down the timer? For a second. Thank you. Give George one second to accept the panelists link. All right, George, you have the floor. George, you're muted. George, are you there?
No, how's that?
Perfect.
Okay, George Scarrola for Lehigh, speaking to the draft five-year plan. Lehigh does not agree that the only way to end homelessness in King County is to build sixteen thousand new units, temporary housing. The draft five-year plan attempts to address every facet of homelessness all at once. We believe the plan should narrow its focus to one central goal, get everyone inside and drastically reduce deaths of homeless people. RHA should prioritize the seventy-six-hundred unsheltered homeless identified in the twenty-two, twenty-two point of time survey. These are the people most at risk of dying from the cold, from acute health issues, and from overdoses. In our recent letter to the Governing Committee, we spell out two parts of a more focused plan. First, RHA should develop a more robust severe weather system, including a dedicated budget, dedicated staff, outreach workers who work evenings and weekends, and a more comprehensive system of severe weather shelters. Second, Lehigh urges RHA to develop thirty-five-hundred units of less expensive emergency shelter that can be built over the next three years, including tiny houses, buying motels, expanding existing non-congregate shelter. We were shocked that the twelve-billion-dollar five-year plan had zero new funding for tiny house villages, the most sought-after, least expensive shelter with the best record of helping people secure permanent housing. One more missed opportunity in the plan, working with the faith community to provide emergency shelter in churches, synagogues, and mosques. Lehigh stands ready to assist RHA in implementing a more feasible, measurable, and accountable five-year plan focused on our unsheltered neighbors. Thank you.
Thank you, George. The next person that we have for public comment is going to be Ashley Capwell. Ashley, when you're ready, you have the floor.
Thank you. Hi, my name is Ashley Capwell. I'm a citizen of Seattle and a parent to a child at John Stanford International School next to Pasadena encampment, where there's been gun violence and murder, where the well-being of my child and others is endangered because of the inaction and incompetence of K C H R A and the state. I'm here to comment on the CEO's update, which is, should be addressing these encampments on the agenda today. K C H R A is not fulfilling its contractual duty to get the people into housing. The authority has been allocated billions of dollars from the state and have had months to do, do this and act, yet they have made no progress in closing and securing the Pasadena encampment. If this is K C H R A's not operating well, this does not just impact Pasadena encampment, but all cities working with the authority, looking to resolve these encampment issues and get unsheltered into housing. Further, there's conflicting information about whether the rights-of-way legislation actually states there must be permanent housing offered versus shelters. K C H R A and state officials have conflicting stories right now, and this is a huge barrier to movement. Meanwhile, crime and safety issues continue to occur while people debate the budget and the shelter rules. Any shelter should be good enough at this point. Our children should be the priority. There have been over six months or more to offer this outreach and housing, and these unsheltered individuals, if they haven't moved yet, what makes them want to move? What is the actual plan and timeline? You, the Governing Committee, need to demand more accountability to your CEO and to your organization to start telling us the truth about what's going on there. To this point, the recent joint communications sent to us on behalf of the W S D O T, the Washington State Patrol, and the authority provide no concrete plans. They contradict details. They don't provide, they contradict that there is an imminent threat within this camp while they're still worried about the safety of their workers. How does this make any logical sense? While I understand that Washington State is public property, I ask you, Mayor Harold, I know your team does great work. I know you've resolved these things before. Please, please help us, Mayor Harold, and the rest of the board. This is our children's safety. This is our children's lives. We ask you to please help resolve this situation. Thank you.
Thank you, Ashley. The next person that we have for public comment is Joe Silver. Joe, when you're ready, you have the floor. Joe, are you there? Please unmute yourself if you hear us. Okay, it seems like Joe is having technical problems, so we are. I will bring Joe back. One second. Okay, Joe, whenever you're ready, you have the floor.
I'm sorry, can you hear me now?
Yes, I can hear you.
Thank you very much. I'm a Seattle resident in the Wallingford neighborhood. I have two children at John Stanford International School. In light of the recent fatal shooting and numerous fires that are unsafe associated with the I T, I mean, the I five Pasadena encampment, I implore the Commission to use its resources to clear out the camp immediately. It's too dangerous and too close to a school to exist. From all the recent communications and various, we've heard with various entities and the news reports, it's clear this committee is not structured to meet its mandate of acting promptly to house the unhoused. Perhaps the city can take this over and Mayor Harold can lead an effort to act quickly. It's a city school that's impacted. City police resources are constantly being consumed, and then we have to wait for a too slow county and state entity to act. I know there's limited resources, there's limited housing, there's tons of encampments across the county. Enough is enough with this one. We need to act promptly like the mandate says. There is shelter beds available. It'll make our kids and our community safer. That should be the immediate focus. We're, we're following rules, and the rules might actually not be effective for our community. So let's all evaluate those, so the families of John Stanford can focus on our education and not our kids' safety.
Joe, does that conclude your public comment?
Yes.
Thank you so much. The next person that we have up for public comment is Eli Hosher. Eli, when you're ready, you have the floor. Eli, are you there?
Sorry, sorry, I was muted.
You're fine. Yes, thank you.
Sorry, my name is Eli Hosher, and I'm a parent of a fourth grader who attends John Stanford Elementary School, and I'd like to talk about the Canal Ship Bridge encampment. As we speak, this is an imminent threat to the community, regardless of what Brian Nielsen from Washdott claimed in his most recent communication with parents. And I'm sorry, there's no such thing as a stabilized encampment. And if you believe this, you'd have to be completely oblivious to reality. This encampment is putting the children and the community at extreme risk of violence, and as we've recently seen, all take place at the site. Murders, fire crimes being committed on a weekly and daily basis, and this has been going on for years. A week ago, I testified to the Regional Homeless Authority and demanded immediate action, and that same night, a massive fire broke out due to fireworks. And a few days later, another encampment off of I five caught on fire where there was a meth lab, guns, and drugs. So we know these are dangerous. And apparent, as a parent, I'm tired of getting caught up in this web of ideologically blinded organizations that can't seem to get their heads wrapped around the idea that adults are the first and foremost responsible for protecting the most vulnerable, and that's children. It's time for the city to step in and take the lead. We're begging for Mayor Bruce Harrell or Dow Constantine or anyone who has some common sense and a spine who cares about children. These agencies that are currently tasked with solving these issues have themselves become part of the problem, and their failure is causing everyone involved to be harmed, especially the homeless people themselves who are not getting the care they need. Last week, Mark Don's used the excuse that nothing can be done until there's an offer of permanent housing. But after looking into this and hearing from other lawmakers, this doesn't appear to actually be the case. So whatever it is, whoever can expedite the immediate removal of this camp is what the parents of this school are demanding and people in this community. We need swift actions, no more excuses. The line has been crossed a long time ago. Act.
Eli, so sorry to interrupt, but you are at time. Thank you so much. The next person that we have up for public comment is Kate McKenzie. Kate, when you're ready, you have the floor. Please make sure to unmute yourself.
Can you hear me?
Yes, I can. Thank you so much.
Okay, great. Um, my name is Kate McKenzie. I have a comment on the encampment resolution strategy using state right-of-way funding. I have three children in S P S, with the youngest two at John Stanford International School, which is within two hundred feet of the Ship Canal encampment. Thus far this school year, there have been shootings, fires, our children have witnessed police activity, mental health emergencies, people sleeping on the sidewalk when kids arrive to school. Is this what we want for our children? Our beautiful city can do better. Mayor Harold was a breath of fresh air, running on a platform of cleaning up the imminent public safety threat that this encampment and others like it pose to our city. But most importantly, the dangers that they pose to our children. Addressing public safety concerns and getting these people into housing are not mutually exclusive ideas. K C R H A has millions of dollars at its disposal, yet this encampment still exists. It is time for K C R H A to ask the City of Seattle to take over responsibility for this encampment. The city has been the most responsive to this imminent public safety threat, but have been hamstrung by jurisdiction. We keep hearing that all the homeless need to be offered permanent supportive housing, but nowhere in the M O U and the contract K C R H A has, does it actually say they need permanent housing? In fact, emergency housing is explicitly mentioned in the M O U. How long does it take to offer housing? If it's turned down, and we know it has been by media accounts and interactions with drug addicts and criminals, what happens then? One of the guiding principles of the intent of the M O U is that prompt action should be taken to move the unhoused inside. Six months is not prompt action. There is capacity in homeless shelters to move these people inside and money to do so, so why are they still outside? You are failing our children. You're failing the people you serve, and you are failing our city. Thank you.
Thank you, Kate. The next person that we have for public comment is going to be Erica. We do not have a last name for Erica. Erica, when you're ready, you have the floor. Please remember to unmute yourself.
Hi, my name is Erica Bigelow. I am a resident of Wallingford, and I am commenting today on the encampment near John Stanford International School under the Ship Canal Bridge. And I agree with everybody who's spoken before me, and I would just like to add that for the people who live along Fifth and along Seventh, which are the two streets that border I five there, this is an untenable situation, this encampment, and with the, the constant discussions in Seattle about the lack of affordable housing, I would like to point out that the, primarily, the people who live along those two streets are renters. That is some of the more affordable housing in the area. And it, it seems like the city has not been listening to the people who have been writing in and calling in and trying to explain that they cannot live in a situation like that. And now, a number of those houses have been destroyed by squatters, by fires, you know, trash and litter and everything in their backyards. So in addition to the situation and the safety situation for the, the school and the kids and the parents who attend that school, there's also the situation for the residents in the neighborhood and the fact that we're kind of squandering affordable housing that is present. And I do want to also agree, or also add my voice to the request that the city please take this over and make some strides in removing this encampment immediately. Thank you.
Thank you, Erica. The next person that we have up for public comment is Jessica Victoria. Jessica, when you're ready, you'll have the floor. Please remember to unmute yourself as well.
Thank you. Hello, Mayor Harold, Executive Constantine, and other Governing Committee members. I am speaking today about the Pasadena encampment under the I five Ship Canal Bridge. I live in the apartment building across from the street from this encampment, where I also work as a resident manager. Myself and my neighbors have been watching the situation in the encampment very closely. Every single day, we have incidents with people coming to our building to rifle through the trash, sleep, and often just hang out. We know there have been three shootings in the encampment, and so many of these people are armed. I hope you understand how terrified we are. Last night, a resident called me because there were two people sleeping in the hall in front of her apartment. I have tremendous empathy for the people who are living in that encampment. I know that many of them are innocent victims themselves. What I cannot understand is why, after getting fifty million from the state to move these poor people into shelter, we are still seeing the problem get worse. This is now a serious public safety issue, and I sincerely hope that you acknowledge and act quickly. Thank you.
Thank you, Jessica. The next person that we have up for public comment is Haley Gatro. Haley, when you're ready, you have the floor. Please remember to unmute yourself.
Thank you. Hi, this is Haley Gatro, parent to a child at John Stanford. Parents in the community have been patient as we've waited well over six months for the Pasadena encampment to be taken care of. We've done outreach to every organization, testified, emailed, called, only to be constantly met with differing answers. It's not our job, it's theirs. We don't have the housing, tone-deaf responses, insinuating we in the community don't care about the homeless, et cetera. Let's be clear, we do care about the homeless community in this city. We also care and will fight for the safety of our children and staff less than a block away. Those two things are not mutually exclusive. We keep hearing from various organizations, parent, permanent housing is required. However, no one can find in the M O U or the contract where this is stated that permanent housing is the only way. We can all agree here that permitting housing is the ideal state, but let's not lose sight that getting the homeless out of the cold and terrible conditions is better for all involved. There are many organizations involved and no accountability by the agencies that are supposedly responsible. We want to point out that we have had the most productive and responsive communications from the City of Seattle, Councilmember Pedersen's office, the city response to the empty houses, the cleaning up graffiti with messages of guns which our children were seeing, and overall S V D response. We'd like to advocate for the city to take over responsibility and be the point organization to everyone, to get everyone in line to make progress on getting folks in shelters, cleaning up the area, and importantly, blockading it from further use. When I've set a boundary with my kids that they don't understand or agree with, my response is, what's my number one job as your mom? And their response is to keep us safe. That's why I'm here today, to keep my kids safe and demand that you do the same. Thank you.
Thank you, Haley. The next person that we have up for public comment is going to be Margaret Holt. Margaret, when you're ready, you have the floor. Please remember to unmute yourself.
Can you hear me now?
Yes, I can.
Okay, thank you. My name is Margaret Holt. I'm a King County resident. I'm curious about homelessness and how we as a community respond to the unhoused as individuals with unique circumstances and needs, something that I as a citizen currently back up with my votes and my taxes. I am also a concerned mother of a student at John Stanford Elementary School, one block from the Pasadena encampment. I need my children, our families, and the staff of our school to be safe, and who doesn't think that these things need to be in conflict? We want safety for everyone. My community members have spoken previously and run down some of the long list of safety, safety incidents from murders, violent fights, fires, smashed car windows, paraphernalia, and human waste on the streets and on our playgrounds. Kids have had to shelter in place due to incidents at the camp. My school community, I continue to ask for a clear plan and a timeline to address the situation, which is an urgent safety emergency for, for both the people within the encampment and those of us nearby. The M O U transitioning people out of the state's right-of-way in King County, signed by the D C, the, this organization, state that the top two goals and objectives are as promptly identifying shelter, shelter and referring unsheltered people to identified emergency and other housing and services. Further, section state that the outreach to people living in W S D O T identified state's rights-of-way include offering them emergency or other housing starting in June twenty twenty-two, funded by the state for one year. We have seen that the Dearborn and Northgate encampments were successfully managed by the city in collaboration with COLI, Just Care, Reach, and other agencies that came together to relocate residents into housing. We have been told by the K C R H A that the case of the Pasadena encampment, we're waiting for a building to be built. We cannot understand why this is, and we do not accept this. There are other options to house people. People are dying and being endangered while the city agencies wait. We are asking.
Margaret, I'm so sorry to interrupt you, but you are at time. Thank you. Okay, Roosevelt, it seems that we do not have any other people on the call that would like to make public comments.
Okay, well, thank you, and I do want to thank all the people who, who came forward and, and brought your public comment to our, to our space. I would just like to, to try to caution folks to understand that we're all in here together to try to do the same work and, and the stigmatizing of, of using stigmatized language, you know, regards to our unsheltered neighbors. It can work both ways, and we really are in the same boat. We are trying to change systems that have been perpetual for a long time, and, and, but I do appreciate your comment. Thank you. But we now will hear from a CEO update from Mark Don's.
Uh, thank you, Chair. Sorry, I was waiting for my camera to turn on. Um, I will note, um, I just want to check in if there's any, uh, folks at the public location, at the physical location, before we transition.
There are no people at the physical location.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you.
No worries. Um, thanks for the time. I will actually try to be brief, um, because I know Implementation Board Chair Ready is here and does have to leave, and so I'd like to be able to transition as quickly as possible uh, to the five-year plan discussion. Um, I will, um, just briefly provide a, a similar update to the update that I provided to the Implementation Board uh, last week. Um, so across our, uh, three priority encampment uh, programs, we have, uh, you know, made significant progress. I agree with the, uh, you know, folks who you just heard from public comment um, that there's a lot more to do, and we need to be faster, uh, and we need to be able to scale to be able to be faster. Uh, currently, the K C R H A resources are activated uh, across three encampments, uh, including the one, um, that you just heard uh, for a combined total of roughly two hundred and fifty people who we are, uh, looking to activate pathways inside for. Um, one of the things that I think is important for the Governing Committee to know is that those pathways, uh, do include offers of, uh, other, uh, forms of shelter inclusive of, um, you know, the existing shelter resources, uh, emergency housing, uh, and permanent housing as available. Um, so we do marshal the totality of what the system is able to provide. Um, we are also, uh, significantly concerned about the safety of residents of the community and residents in the encampments, and so have also, um, expanded our partnerships um, with providers to pull in additional resources um, to, uh, de-risk, uh, particularly around fire safety. Um, at one encampment this week, we collected, uh, well over, um, fifty flammable containers, uh, propane and other forms of heating in partnership with the City of Seattle um, and are continuing to expand our partnerships specifically around, uh, some of the public safety issues that are active at all of these encampments that we are currently engaged with. Um, you know, as. You know, as folks know, KC RHA is not a law enforcement agency, but we take the safety of folks quite seriously and are looking to partner quite aggressively with our law enforcement partners in order to have an active set of strategies that are deployed across those spaces. The only thing else that I'll say in terms of keeping my update quite brief is that what we are focused on as we move through refining our encampment strategy is ways that we can better secure sites that we are not able to exit people from rapidly, and some of that will include some dedicated focus on, you know, securing site access, again, ongoing de-risking of the site for flammable materials and partnering with our law enforcement in a stable way that is ongoing and not case by case. And I will wrap it up, and I see that the mayor has a hand up.
Thank you, Mark. Thank you, Chair. If I may ask you a question. Not really get these hand things. You'll probably be up for the whole meeting now. Get that put it down. Mark, you referenced three encampments. Can you describe which one you were referencing in your report?
The one that we removed the flammable materials from?
I thought I heard, and I might have misheard. I thought you were describing at least three prioritized areas that you were talking about some significant work had been done, at least work, recent work has been done. I didn't know which three you were, were there three specifically you're referring to, or just generally?
Yeah, no, there are three specific encampments, Mayor. I, we try not to talk about the specific locations. I will say that two of them are, you know, in the Chinatown International District, and another one is the Pasadena encampment.
Yeah, I wasn't referring to future work. I thought you were describing work that had been done. I don't know the reason for not talking about firework. I'm not trying to call it. I just wanted to understand what you're referring to, so it's hard not to understand it if, yeah, in particular for many people that are following. Thank you. Thank you, Mark. Thank you very much.
No, and I apologize. Let me restate to be very clear. So we are active across three sites right now, two that are in the CID, one that is in North Seattle. Prior work in the right-of-way project that has brought in roughly 120 households was the Dearborn encampment, which one of the folks who called in referenced, and then also another encampment in North Seattle as well. Both of those have been completely resolved. The land has been transitioned back over to the property owner Wash Dot. And for the active sites, we have brought inside, I believe, about seventy folks who are currently in some form of temporary lodging or shelter, and we're looking to, in partnership with Deputy Mayor Washington, actually ramp significant amount of both temporary and permanent placement capacity over the next week or so in order to be able to move through the, you know, several hundred people who are in need of rapid assistance.
So if I could, May Chair, Chairman Recorder, thanks for indulging me a little bit because I know we're going to dive into the five-year-plan in a moment. And I, because I don't sit on the Implementation Board, I assume there's this kind of back and forth, but this is just my opportunity as a governing committee member to have a back and forth with Mark. So I want to take advantage of that a little bit if I can. One of the things we're doing is, in recent weeks, we've had discussions with both the governor and people from the state, and we're having the law enforcement folks try to make sure everyone is safe, those experiencing homelessness residents around, and trying to put in with the values that I know this organization believes in, which is empathy and compassion and trying to treat folks. We understand that, and that's how my conversations are evolving. And as we dive into the to the five-year-plan, I just want to sort of put it out there that I think we have an opportunity as an organization, because I'm part of it, to not pit sheltered people against unsheltered people, not pit organizations against residents, and that we listen to one another. And I've had some great experience with people from the lived experience coalition that I think, quite frankly, as we center their voices, I think they get it better than anyone. And as we, one part that's, I think, not in the plan, and we'll talk about other components of it in a minute, is how we we almost control the narrative to make sure that everyone is being listened to, and we do lead with empathy and compassion, but with a sense of urgency. And so so as we move forward on those three or four very specific encampments, I think therein lies our opportunity to, again, work with the state to do it in the right way. And that's the discussion that I'm having, my staff have with your staff. And so when I hear people talk about, through public testimony, about what they're experiencing for their children, I don't demonize them either. I try not to demonize anyone. And so I think we have an opportunity, and I don't think we ignore it, and I really appreciate the way the chair handled that if the chair hears something that's demonizing anyone. The fact of the matter is, there are some pretty scary folks in some of these places too, and I think, you know, as a lifelong resident in Seattle, I'd be the first to say that. And so so I'll stop there, and then I'll save some more comments for for our five-year discussion, unless you wanted to react to what I said, said, Mark.
No, Mayor, I completely agree with what you've said. I appreciate the comments. Thank you.
Mr. McDermott, if I may?
Chair recognizes Mr. McDermott.
Thank you so much. Mark, I would inquire how we have selected, how the agency has selected those three sites to prioritize at this time, and whether now or in follow-up, to share with me how we prioritize sites for spot action like this.
Thank you, Mr. McDermott. We can absolutely brief you in your office. We use a prioritization framework that drives how we engage with encampments that considers a number of factors, inclusive of violence, public health risk, proximity to sensitive location, all of the things that, you know, through conversation with the community and the lived experience coalition and providers, we aligned on as being, you know, the core items, but we're happy to brief you on the tool in detail.
Thank you.
Okay. Now, Mr. Dons, is that all? Mark, is that all you have?
Yes, Chair. Thank you.
I apologize.
No worries.
Okay, we will now have a presentation on the input and the next steps for the five-year-plan by CEO Mark Dons, Implementation Board Sima Reddy, and Director of Subregional Planning and Equitable Engagement, Alexis Mercedes-Rink.
Thank you so much, Chair. And my name is Sima Reddy. I'm the current co-chair for the KC RHA Implementation Board, and thank you for having us here. So today, CEO Dons and Alexis Mercedes-Rink are going to provide an update on where we stand in terms of our five-year planning. So over the last month, they've, the staff has really focused on soliciting feedback on that initial draft. They've solicited quite a lot of feedback from people currently or previously homeless, you know, our main consumers and clients from the general public, from service providers, from other stakeholders, and from the Implementation Board. And, you know, just to give you a sense of kind of next steps, over the next six weeks or so, the Implementation Board will be working closely with staff to try to incorporate this feedback into the plan to make it stronger. And then moving towards a, with a plan in April for our board to vote to approve, decline or amend this plan, and then send it to you for review and approval potentially. I think, I speak for our Implementation Board, when I say that we want a clear plan, you know, that sets this community on a solid path towards, we really want a crisis response system that's going to bring people into safety with urgency and effectiveness. And I'm truly grateful to all the people who've provided feedback to date. I think that's going to make this a significantly stronger plan than as we move forward. But let me turn it over to Alexis, who can share a little bit more of what they've learned so far.
Thank you so much, Chair. And good afternoon. Oh, it's not afternoon. I'm sorry. Good morning. Good morning. Your governing committee members, for the record, my name is Alexis Mercedes-Rink. I use pronouns. And today I'll be providing an overview of the nature of the feedback we've received to date, while offering also a preliminary look of the nature of that feedback from our partners, and then closing with an overview of how we're going to be conducting revisions over the next few months. I will note that the materials that I'll be presenting out today will be posted following today's meeting. We just closed the feedback survey last week, and we're still closing a lot of the additional engagement opportunities on the five-year-plan. And so our team is launching into a pretty robust assist effort to honor and really bring forward all the feedback that was shared, but we didn't want to miss an opportunity to present some of the preliminary findings while we had this time with you today. And so with that, I will get this presentation going. Wonderful. So starting us off on the feedback survey, this survey was open for a total of three weeks, and in that time, we received 640 responses. The survey itself asked questions related to prioritization of activities, both within goal area and then by initiative, and then also provided space for comments on each goal area, and then a comment space also for general whole comments on the nature of the plan. And when we look at also the geographic spread of our survey responses, we managed to reach every subregion within King County with about half of respondents being from Seattle, but then having some solid representation for east and south, as well as north, some folks from unincorporated King County, and some folks who also just marked countywide. And further, we were able to reach some of our neighbors with lived experience of homelessness, whether current or past. But we do see that the largest amount of survey respondents were our housed neighbors. And so moving beyond the survey, we've also been taking steps to collect feedback from government partners, folks with lived experience through other forums, and community partners in a variety of ways. We've received a number of formal letters, both from organizations as well as from jurisdictions. We've received robust emailed feedback. We're working also on in-person engagements, going out and being with our unhoused neighbors to talk about elements of the plan. And then we held three luncheon learns weeks ago, focusing on a walkthrough of the plan and really diving into identifying potential gaps and things within the plan that folks are on earth, they are wanting clarity on. Had a series of provider leadership briefings as well to get feedback. And then again, we're continuing to synthesize the survey feedback with a look at geographic breakdown, the prioritization of goal areas and activities, while also coding comments. So doing a quick qualitative code to best capture what folks were sharing in those feedback boxes. So some of the early preliminary themes that have been unearthed in this process, when we look at the survey responses, there are five key areas that were really uplifted when we look across the comments. The first being a real emphasis on the need to address behavioral health challenges in our community right now. The vast majority of the comments had made mention to behavioral health challenges. Further, identifying there were concerns about the outline cost details in the plan. Further, looking at how we can increase accountability, not only for KC RHA, but also for local service providers. There was a notable theme around the concern around the tiny house village modeling, and then also some comments around restructuring the plan for clarity, wanting to see a bit more organization around what comes first. With some of our feedback with folks with lived experience, there was some identification from folks that there needed to be stronger recognition.
I'm sorry, Alexis, I apologize for interrupting. I just need to ask a little logistical question. And Chair, I'll defer to you or Mark. The plan itself is a very long plan, over a hundred pages. I don't know how long this presentation is going to last. But are we supposed to hold our questions till the end, or can we ask questions as we go? What, do we have an expected format here? Because I don't want to be the, I have a lot of questions, but I'm not sure when I should get them in.
I appreciate that, Mayor Harrell. Thank you. I have a couple of slides related to just the preliminary themes, and I was hoping to pause at that point for the board to have an opportunity to weigh in, not only on the feedback we've received today, but also weigh in with your own feedback related to five-year-plan, and then we'll talk about next steps on the revision process.
Wonderful. I'll wait for your pause. Thank you.
Thank you very much. So taking us to preliminary themes from our community members with lived experience, really emphasizing that there was a desire to have stronger recognition in the plan around subregional dynamics and experience, and how the experiences in accessing services are very, very different for folks in different parts of the county. There was concern that the plan does not address further drivers of homelessness, and wanting to see appreciation and want that there is a lens in the plan around increasing wraparound supports and supportive services. Overall, a desire to just have a more connected system and really uplifting the concern around having to primarily receive referrals and be bounced around to various parts of the county to get services that are needed. And there was a notable emphasis on the need for service matching, so finding and identifying what is kind of the right fit of program that meets somebody's needs. Those were some of the primary preliminary themes that came out of engaging with our community members with lived experience. In our engagement with city partners, and this was primarily through some bi-weekly sessions our team has with our city partners around the region, we've also received a number of formal letters from jurisdictions. There was a desire to strengthen goal area seven background and rationale. This is, this goal area, as a reminder, is related to how our region moves together as one to address homelessness, and then clarifying as jurisdictional partners roles in addressing costs and next steps with cost of implementing the plan. A desire to include additional information from the Understanding Unsheltered Homelessness Project, so that qualitative narrative data with a subregional lens, and then clarifying some of the funding data pieces subregionally. Further, looking at how we can adjust the severe weather language, and also what the severe weather work as we move towards regionalizing our severe weather response system. And then in the last area, some notes about how we ultimately move on approving subregional implementation plans. And then the last stakeholder group I wanted to touch on is the preliminary feedback we've received from our provider partners. Our provider partners have been really focused on how we can clarify what the impact and direction KC RHA will go in now with the modeling work included in the plan, what is really the impact of it. And further, really uplifting what the future of congregate shelter settings are, this being tied to the modeling work as well. There's been some uplifting about what would it mean for our system to move towards implementing wage equity in terms of just operationalizing that, and how would that also hash out in the procurement process? Real emphasis on strengthening and clarifying what potential changes would be happening to coordinated entry in support of all the other areas of the plan, and then a real emphasis on the maintenance of existing services across the system. Providers feeling that the current version of the plan does not fully address how we can make sure that we're maintaining services as we undergo a pretty dramatic system transformation. And so at this moment, I will pause before talking about the revision process, and would love to hear from the board any reactions, questions, and so on about feedback received to date.
I had a question. Just trying to put my hand up. I told you I'm slow on that hand thing. Chair, may I proceed?
Yes, go ahead.
Thank you. So just a knee-jerk sort of question, and that is, both from the feedback, and by the way, it looked like a great job was done. I'm looking at the number of people that responded to the survey, the geographic subregion description of who responded, so thanks for giving us this information, putting it in an easy-to-understand format. Coming from the public on their portion of survey responses and the city partners who are on the on the floor doing the work, you know, out there in the field, there doesn't seem to be any feedback about the public safety piece from anyone. I'm getting feedback from service providers that many of them fear for their life and their safety as they do some of this work, and that doesn't seem to be a concern, and at least if I'm reading this correctly. And then I think we heard a lot of public comment about the safety of everyone around there, not just the- And then I think we heard a lot of public comment about the safety of everyone around there, not just the, those experiencing homelessness, but the surrounding areas. But this doesn't seem to be reflected in any of these themes. Am I just missing something or is it in one of these rectangles that I just don't understand?
I would share, that's a fantastic question. Thank you. I would share in the survey responses, a lot of the comments related to behavioral health challenges. Do you also tie to emit comments about public safety?
May I?
I didn't understand your, your answer. I'm sorry. What, what, what did you say?
Apologies. Um, I was speaking to some of the comments that we've received related to public safety on the five year plan. So I want to affirm that we are receiving that through the, the survey. It's tied to a lot of the comments related to behavioral health. But in terms of how public safety is regarded currently within the plan, I'll turn to our CEO.
Thanks, Alexa. One, I, I want to affirm that like, a lot of the, the comments that we've received are tethering safety to behavioral health concerns explicitly. And so they're saying things like, you know, I'm seeing, you know, people who are in active states of psychosis or are in, you know, significant impairment because of use of substances. And then are directing the concern towards where is the behavioral health response for these things? And so we definitely are hearing about safety, but it's coming, it's coming to us through that lens of behavioral health. I think that one of the things though, Mayor, that I will lift up as a likely technical revision is that the authority will take up a posture on what partnership is necessary in order to move some significant safety work forward. You know, our perspective is that because we are not chartered as a law enforcement agency, that has to be done in partnership. But I think we concur with you based on what we're hearing from certainly our provider community. You know, that we need to have a, we do need to play a role there, even if it's just convening discussion.
Thank you.
Was that all of Mark? Because Andrew Lewis has a question.
I believe Councilmember Balducci was actually before him, if I'm.
It's hard for me to see those hands also.
Is responsive maybe to that exchange just now, but I don't want to.
Thank you for asking.
Just briefly, I would say, I mean, to the partnerships, Mark, that you're envisioning around public safety. We do have a pretty good model in when we were doing Just Care Downtown, where there was that kind of integration between the relevant agencies that might have special specialties outside of the core outreach and, and housing placement and system navigation. And I, I mean, I, I know you're intimately familiar with, with that model and those stakeholders. But you know, I wonder how much of it could just be going back and really looking at how we operationalize some of those encampment resolutions in the spring of 2021 that, that had incredibly significant public safety challenges associated with them. But we were able to assemble the, the teams and inter-jurisdictional cooperation that was necessary to do it efficiently and effectively. And is that sort of what you're envisioning in talking about how to standardize those kinds of connections in the exchange you just had with the mayor?
Yeah, that's right. And, and to your point, we work daily with, you know, the lead teams and the PDA and reach and folks who are really, really skilled at navigating public safety, criminal legal system engagement of clients, right? And, and you know, pulling together the right folks to get the job done. I think, you know, what, what we're finding though, I think this is, is in line with what you're saying, Councilmember, but let me know. Is that it, it's being done to ad hoc, right? It's, it's like every single time we're sort of pulling together away when I think we need to take a step back and create like, this is the approach. And be really locked in on what that looks like and who's going to play what roles. And, you know, I think we need to have discussion with our law enforcement partners in the city of Seattle, but also frankly, in the other 38 cities and, you know, at the sheriff's level around like, how do we have a playbook? What kinds of situations do we need to anticipate so that like, when those things happen? It's not a, okay, what are we going to do? But it's instead a, yep, we planned for this and we know how to move quickly.
Totally. I mean, what I'm suggesting too, is that the Public Defender Association has done a pretty good job of building that playbook. And we have a lot of people with direct experience at the Seattle Police Department, West Precinct, too, who have been part of that playbook. And I guess what I'm just encouraging is maybe, like, I don't know how much reinventing needs to happen. I think those parties could package that. And then if you want to take that as a template to other jurisdictions, other agencies. Like, I, I would just suggest it exists and maybe to move, for us to move with urgency on that, it's just like bottling that and then distributing to the other places. But I'll leave it at that for now and totally glad we're thinking the same way on that. Thank you.
Okay. I see we have Councilmember Balducci and then Lamont Green.
Thank you very much. And please, somebody jump in and stop me if this is out of order. But I want to start just by observing that this conversation that we're having today is a beautiful little microcosm of exactly the problem we're trying to solve. We have crying urgent needs right this very minute and an inadequate system to meet those needs right this very minute. And we're trying to deal with that while at the same time, building something bigger and more longer term. That will mean that we are not in the same position when the emergency arrives after the system is built out the way it ought to be. So, I mean, I feel it all, but this is, this is the, the challenge. So I would like to just make a couple of quick observations without the public input to the plan. And you did signal Alexis that you're talking in a moment about process. But let me just preview that I'm concerned we might not have enough steps in the process because we've gotten a, an overview of the public comment. I'm reading some, you know, institutional comments that are coming to, to us directly. And there's some good ideas in here. And so you're going to take those ideas. You're gonna amend the plan or make recommendations through the implementation board based on some of that feedback. And then it's going to come back to us for a recommendation and vote boom. And I just feel like we might need one more step because there might be some things where there's some discussion to be had about how much we want to react to the feedback. And I'm going to just share a few quick things from where I sit first. Just wanted to let everyone here know that because Councilmember McDermott and I represent the King County Council, we are scheduling a briefing with our committee of the whole to give an opportunity for all the council members to hear about the plan, to ask questions, to give inputs so that we can serve our representative role. So that will be coming soon. We'll be in touch with you all about, hopefully you can attend. It's at a fixed date and time, but hopefully we can get somebody there to, to help with that. So I represent East King County and in East King County, I think you can see where there can be some sub-area based maybe differences in how we ramp up the plan is the way I think of it. So what I hear from my folks is the plan talks about, just for example, congregate shelter. I think we have all learned through COVID that individualized housing is by far more effective, far more healthier. And when you're definitely, we're moving in that direction rapidly in some cases. And you point out the congregate shelter utilization. I think it's up to 23% in the KCRJ funded shelters. In East King, our congregate shelters are at 90% utilization. They are in some cases, the only tool we have. And we're just, if you drive up and down I-90, you can see it. We're just building the first big men's congregate filter or men's shelter, I should say, that we have on the east side. So I'd like to just ask, that's just one example, congregate shelters that we think about. If we need to bring certain parts of the county along in a different path or in different timelines, what does that cost? What does it take? How do we, how do we, how do we do that? Because I think that will absolutely be something we need to do. And then of course, I wouldn't be doing my job if I didn't on behalf of my agencies, bringing up coordinated entry. This plan makes a really good case for a and remodeled, if you will, but, but very, you know, comprehensive coordinated entry plan. You all are very familiar with the challenges that we have had with that, that process in some ways. And I just hear repeatedly that somehow making the model of coordinated entry be available for people who need the most, who are most in need, which is the goal of coordinated entry, but also keep their connections. Because there may be people who have less need, but are being moved far away, or they may have a high level need to be moved far away from whatever social connections they have in the place where they're currently residing. They might have a community around them that's supporting them. They might have a job. They might have, you know, care providers. And so if we take that person from, you know, where they're living on, in a, a park, let's say somewhere in South King County and send them to East King County, you sever all those ties. So I think we need to really think about how that works. And then the last thing I'm going to say is, because I don't dominate too much. It, we would be remiss if somebody didn't point a finger at the price tag. And I get the big challenge, like this is a marker and it's an important marker. We need to say this is what a fully functioning crisis response system looks like. And we want a fully functioning crisis response system. But I think we also have to acknowledge to ourselves, we are unlikely to have anywhere near the kind of funding it would take to build this crisis response system. And so what do we do? What do we do first? What do we do second? How do we prioritize what we, what we can do? So options for what comes first, what comes next, what do you do with the next chunk of funding would be really good to see. Thank you. And I look forward to the rest of the conversation. Sorry if I jumped ahead, Chair.
No, that's, that's fine, Councilman, Councilman. That's, that's great. Lamont Green?
Thank you, Roosevelt. And I definitely agree with Councilmember Balducci's comments. And just to add on to that, when we look at the survey responses for those currently experiencing homelessness, it appears that only 15 people were surveyed. And for me, that's a very concerning low number. As we know, one of our mantras in the LEC is that those closest to the problem are closest to the solutions, but often furthest from power and resources. And I know that we're going to have to act quickly. We're going to have to be pragmatic and also innovative, right? Cause we don't have tons of money, but I think our biggest allies in developing solutions that work are unhoused neighbors, right? We don't want to design things that they're not going to utilize. And so I really think that that number needs to, to be more robust there, right? Cause some of the themes that we have been hearing from our unhoused neighbors, our lived experience coalition would be, you know, slightly different and, and a bit more direct than some of what I'm seeing now. And then my second comment is regarding the piece from the public around increased accountability for King County Regional Homeless Authority and service providers. And this is one that the lived experience coalition in our constituency of unhoused neighbors really feel strongly about. And it is what drove us to co-design the joint Ombuds Office. But we do have some concerns because there have been some, some recent memos and conversations where it appears that that joint LEC, King County Regional Homeless Authority Ombud's Office may not happen. So I'm just wanting to know, what is the commitment from King County Regional Homeless Authority to ensure that that is a joint office? Because you can't have an Ombuds Office that's completely situated under King County Regional Homeless Authority. Because we need to have good interdependency and good accountability. And accountability is a healthy, good thing. Transparency is a healthy, good thing. And so the LEC and our unhoused neighbors advocated for this, co-designed this. There's an MOA about a joint office, but it appears that there's been movement that's been contrary. And so I just wanted to know, what is our commitments there?
Anybody want to answer that or?
Alexis, do you want to begin?
I'll, I'll, I'll speak to Lamont's comments on the, the first piece particularly because absolutely. So just to, to reiterate what Lamont had shared on the survey responses with folks with lived experience. We had 101 folks with former experience of homeless experience, pardon me. 101 folks with former experience respond, but only 15 with current experience. And that obviously was a big red flag to our team. So our team is actually going out in person next week in partnership with, with Outreach, who have trusted relationships to engage folks currently living unsheltered on elements of the plan. So we were being really responsive to that to ensure that we are engaging on that front.
On the Ombuds function, I, I'm afraid I'm not able to speak to this as freely as I'd like because it, it involves some collective bargaining stuff and, and other union and legal action that is under, in, in process. And so if the, you know, if the chairs want to go into executive session to discuss that, then we are able to do so. Otherwise, what I would suggest is that there be a separate briefing. You know, for, and I would ask that, you know, the implementation board executive committee be represented in that discussion as well, since they're apprised of this kind of stuff daily about sort of what, what's happening in that space. But I heard of the chair on whether or not executive session is called for here.
Is it necessary? Mr. Green, I'd like some feedback from you on that portion. What do you?
It's up to you, Mr. Chair, but I think an executive session could be helpful. I'm open to what this group decides.
I guess I'm curious also, what is, is there a motion to go into executive session about this Ombuds?
Chair McQuarter?
Sure, go ahead.
Uh, yeah, maybe a suggestion, because I do think there's widespread interest in this topic. Maybe we could bookmark and have an executive session on the end of our discussion to not break the flow of the general feedback on the plan. Um, at the Seattle City Council, that's typically how we organize the cadence of that conversation. So then we, and also for the benefit of the viewing public, we don't just go into executive session in the middle and then come back later. So it, it might be at your discretion, most effective for us to, to consider that motion at the end of our items of business. Cause I, I too actually would, would like to have an executive session about the Ombud discussion. But that, that is just a suggestion and totally defer to, to your leadership.
I, I appreciate that. And yeah, we can, we can do it that way to continue with the flow. Was your hand up first or was it Mayor Harold's hand? That's next. On this continuing discussion.
I believe, believe mine was, but I'm happy to defer to Mayor Harold, if you would like to call on him first.
No, no, you're going.
For from a council member, I'll take that any day of the week.
The times are changing for sure. Go ahead, Mayor.
Thank you. Thank you, Councilman Lewis. Just a couple of things. And I, I'm sort of responding a little bit to Councilman Balducci's point that I, I just hope that people understand that the way this model is set up, that basically the city of Seattle has outsourced the majority of its budget for a department in addressing homelessness to this group. And because of that, I almost treat this much like my 41 departments on how I have to be granular. Why we're trying to solve this $13 billion issue, I have to get into the weeds because this is our budget and the model is not that way for the county, but it is for the city and that's the structure that I inherited. So, so when I ask about specific encampments and specific strategies, I have to, because this is my only opportunity to see if my city's taxpayers' dollars are being used effectively. And, and this is the only governing committee opportunities during these meetings. And my staff, of course, works vehemently offline with their staff. And, and, and I, I've been enjoying the work that's being done there. So having said that, when I look at this plan, I, I think you did perhaps what you thought was a directive, which is what does a full investment to solve homelessness look like? And you looked through it and had come up with your strategies and certainly has come up with a big price tag. But I, I know we can't fund that. And so somewhere in that, there has to be some mentioning, mentioning of strategies and funding mechanisms to achieve that, because we're looking at, you know, eight and a half billion dollars in capital costs or 3.4 billion or so in annual operating costs. That's, that's almost another city's budget and larger than some of the cities that are in the county. And so I, I worry about that. So the way I would suggest we sort of approach it is, number one, with the resources you have now, assuming there's going to be incremental increases in the next couple of years, they'll say between five to 10%. Uh, increases in the next couple of years, they'll say between five to ten percent. What can you do now? What's the current course and speed by which you could address homelessness? What does that look like? And we could see that and examine it. We're open or transparent. Because this model that we've. This model that we are working under is still sort of a work in progress. As we evaluate the model. So I'll call that the current course and speed model. The second one would be a regional scale up. So. Uh, which will be a model change where other smaller cities or other. Work from the federal government or other funding agencies could possibly help us scale up. Other cities perhaps contributing either resources. And I say resources. It not just money, but what does that regional scale up would like? I'll call that sort of model number two. And model number three is sort of what we have now, the full investment. But it seems to be this five-year plan focuses on a full investment and doesn't go down to models one and two. And for me to approve a plan, I have to sort of know what it looks like, because I will say in full. Transparency that the current price tag, I don't see, I don't see a. A route to achieve that. And and if you're gonna put that out there, then you have to help, I think, some of the elected leaders figure out the route to that. I'll stop there.
Thank you, Matt. Thank you. Uh, go ahead, Councilman Lewis.
Thank you so much, Chair. Uh, I I um uh have two areas of feedback. Uh, that I would like to offer on the general plan and possibly two pieces of. Companion legislation that I would recommend uh or ideas that could be incorporated into the four corners of the plan. They they follow partly along the line of inquiry from Mayor Harold. But I think that there's two things that I would like to see and that a lot of my constituents in the city would like to see as I have received. Feedback on this plan. Um, the first one is. The twelve billion dollar number, we just had a discussion with Mayor Harold about how some of that. Is certainly going to have to come from discussions about new revenue, discussions about budget priorities from our constituent partners. Um, and that that number in and of itself is is. Far and away higher than what can be achieved within existing resources. But that entire number doesn't have to come from revenue. Some of it can come from regulatory reforms. Streamlining, cutting of red tape. Uh, and we've demonstrated that in the city Seattle with legislation. Um, two years ago, where the city Seattle exempted permanent supportive housing from most of our land use and. Uh, um, process controls that are purely within the power of the city. Things like onsite parking, onsite bicycle storage, uh, the design review process. Streamlining of permitting process, those things aggregated to a fifteen percent reduction in capital costs associated with permanent supportive housing. Those numbers were quantified by some of the same leaders who currently serve on our implementation board. And one thing that I would like to see and and um I would like to introduce to the governing board a resolution to this effect. Is really triggering some work from the from the authority on creating a suite of deregulatory proposals. That could lower that overall price tag just by virtue of removing some of the impediments that inflate capital costs. That uh bog projects down and delay, that expose projects to potential um litigation and performative opposition. Um, from people who want to avoid the sighting of a shelter or a permanent supportive housing facility that have to be litigated in the courts. Um, we have the power uh and we have the relationships with other people who have the power we don't directly have. Uh, to drive some of those cost savings. And we've done that in the city Seattle and we can quantify the value of some of those reforms. Um, we have thirty-nine constituent jurisdictions in King County. I would love to engage in a broader process. About how we can take some of those reforms we've already passed in Seattle and through model ordinances, propagate them to other jurisdictions. And have that be part of the leadership of the of the K C T R H A. Um, as a hub for disseminating those reforms as part of the overall project. Uh, and it'll have the the impact of lowering the overall cost of the of the plan that we ultimately commit to in the five-year plan. So. That is the first thing I think we should examine. Um, is how we we have that kind of deregulatory response. Uh, for some of these things that streamline, eliminate red tape and and frankly, eliminate um lawyers. I can say that since I am one uh from the process. Uh, the second thing, sort of along the lines of what Mayor Harold emphasized. Um, I I would like to see. Sort of a flipping of the emphasis, and maybe this is something we could do in a companion resolution rather than the pure five-year plan. Um, a flipping of the emphasis from the overall twelve billion scaled crisis response. To a more tactical and direct. Two-year plan uh at a price tag that is more within existing resources. That can be nimble, responsive and um bring the kind of response for hearing from the public. That they want to see with exigency when there are um significant encampments that are problematic, not just to the people living in the encampments, but the surrounding community. And we want to be able to move with some kind of desirable non-congregate shelter. Uh, that is more achievable on a shorter timeframe than scaling. Uh, long-term brick and mortar uh permanent supportive housing. Um, so solutions like hotel motel acquisition, tiny homes and pallet shelters. Um, that can be scaled with urgency and scaled um more achievable within existing resources. To to mitigate those most significant encampments that um. Uh, that are rightly causing significant community consternation. So those are the two corollaries I would put out there. To to the overall plan to focus on ways we can make regulatory reforms to reduce the overall cost. And to have a corresponding short-term tactical plan that responds to the most exigent challenges we're facing. Um, and with that, I'll I'll turn it back over to the Chair.
Thank you, Councilman Lewis. Um, Alexis, was that um is your presentation? Are you still continuing?
Yes, I do have some more content, but I do also see a hand from CEO Downs.
Yes, go ahead, CEO, please.
Um, I wanted to take a just a quick opportunity to respond to some of the. Like not point by point, but some of the collective feedback raised by the governing committee. Um, so uh, one thing. Um, hearing from, you know, sort of Mayor Harold in terms of thinking through. Uh, the sort of tiers, I I should say, of like how to approach. Um, the the system and and its architecture. Uh, absolutely makes sense to our team. And I think that one of the things um that we have heard. Uh, in this moment of feedback, just to be, you know, very clear is that the, you know, the the plan needs to. Have some of those more concrete tactical, what's next? How do you sequence that? Like that needs to be much clearer. And so there is no question that in uh the next uh round of technical revisions. Um, that will um uh absolutely be done. Um, the other thing, and this may be connected, um, you know, to some degree to. Some of what council uh members, uh Louis and Balducci said. Um, but one of the things that we want to be really clear about is that, you know, the the modeling. Um, represent, I mean, it's it's math, right? So you know, like. You know, the modeling, for example, calls for fewer micro modular uh shelters than what we currently have, right? Um, no one on our staff is asserting that we should close anything that we have. Um, because that is, that is not, that like we are not in that position. Um, and so uh the the, you know, while the modeling is is math, it does have to hit the reality of where we're at. And we're not going to, like, there, no one on our team is um trying to be so rigidly adherent to the math. Um, that we are, you know, cutting things we already have or, you know, just walking away from, you know. Projects that are funded and in development because they, you know, don't meet uh the criteria of where we're trying to go. Um, and so I really want to be clear about that and lift up that that is another like technical revision that you'll see in the next document is being much clearer about. Um, you know, sort of. Here's what the math says, and here is our intention and reaction to that math. Um, and that there, uh, you know, I had a chance to chat with. Um, uh, Marvin Frustral, who's the Policy Director of the Lived Experience Coalition this morning. And one of the things that he lifted up was. You know, a need to, there are some specific, um, you know, bodies of policy work that the Lived Experience Coalition is interested in. Moving forward that need to be clearer as outlined as, you know, things that we're going to do together. So. I think that, you know, those kinds of things you can absolutely expect to see in the next uh draft of the document. The next thing that I think is connected to, you know, everything that uh, you know, we're hearing with in terms of. Uh, price tag and then um some of the the issues around, you know, regulatory reform and structure that again, Councilmember Lewis raised. Is that, you know, the the plan currently talks about. Um, the need to uh do significantly better with federal revenue. And I think that, you know. What what the reactions have, uh, you know, sort of showed our team and after some discussion. You know, we really want to flesh that out because that is more than a like thought, right? Like there's actually quite a bit of. Um, policy work that has gone into thinking about what existing federal entitlement revenue streams. Are not being well utilized inside the homelessness response system. And when I say that, I mean, everything from basic things like E B T and WIC. To more expansive things like foundational community supports eligible under the eleven fifteen waiver. All of that work um is uh is necessary from from our perspective in order to. Uh, begin to shift how the response system is structured. Uh, from a basic sort of payment architecture and uh put it on a path to being more scalable. And attached to existing federal revenue streams. And and to be clear that like what the authority staff are is proposing is not like a hail Mary congressional appropriation when we talk about. Better utilization of federal funding. Um, additionally, I would uh, you know, sort of uh say on that front. Um, just in in sort of all candor, um, and I think this is. Particularly important for the public to hear. By, you know, our analysis, there's a significant amount of one-time uh COVID money that is currently paying for services in the system. Um, that's gonna go away. And we need to be clear about how we're going to. Uh, sustain some of the activity that that is uh currently funding without. Um, going immediately to, you know, any of our thirty-nine cities or the county. And instead saying, you know, is there a smarter, sharper way again to utilize? Federal fund sources to continue to drive these bodies of work. And so. That will be a significant technical revision that you all will see um in the plan. Um, and we'll speak um really uh comprehensively both to. What our uh analysis thinks is possible. We've engaged some uh technical assistance support on that. Um, in order to make sure that we are, again, you know, the the modeling makes sense, that we're looking at all the right regulation, et cetera. Um, but it's clear uh after discussion. With a a number of of stakeholders, um, that, you know, we cannot gesture at that. It does need to be much, much more detailed.
Thank you. CEO Downs, is there any? Okay, um. For the benefit of those that are. Out here in public, um, we're going to move to an executive session. And it lists to be like till the end of. Of this session today, so.
I'm sorry, Chair. I didn't, I didn't realize we're doing it that fast, because this would be the end of our public meeting, correct?
And I think Alexis actually has a couple more slides about the process for like to Councilmember Balducci's point around like how will. The feedback be machined next? I think I I want to make sure that she has an opportunity to speak to that question.
And and I just want to make it, I didn't realize we were wrapping up. That's cool with me. I had one other comment I want to make just to give the uh staff feedback before going to the executive session by main chair.
Yes, yes, fine. Guys, continue.
Right now?
Yes, go ahead.
Hey, we're, we're Seattle polite here. Like the people at the at the uh four-way stop, no one wants to go first. Okay, I'll take it. So the feedback I want to give in addition to what I've already given is in in what I. Talking to my staff and thumbing through the plan, um, just again, feedback. So we talk about emergency shelter, whatever form that is, whether there's tiny homes or whatever kind of shelter we're doing. But I'm not just clear on the strategy for increasing emergency shelter in a plan. And maybe it's there and maybe I just not seeing it, but. I I just want a little more meat there, so it's it jumps out at you. And I gotta just tell you, for me, you know, I I don't know how many hundreds, how many, how long the plan is, but for me. Short and simple is good. So a strategy for increasing uh emergency shelter. Quite frankly, just a strategy for improving the system whereby we move people into shelter, whether it's emergency or permanent, I'm just not sure. Again. I know there are safety issues, because I'm talking to too many folks to saying, I want to go in here and do God's work and it's just not safe for me. And I'm not gonna put. Any of the social workers, any of the outreach workers, any of my firefighters and my police officers in a situation where violence can occur. That's it. That on my administration, I talked to everyone about our approach. When we do this, and we may screw up sometimes, it's not for the lack of trying to coach everyone the right way. And so I think we have to talk about that. In the outreach work that we're doing is how do we make it safe? And increase, and what does that system look like? And I will help, because that's why I'm talking to folks again and on the state level about this. And and last, I'll talk about a strategy for diversion. And you've heard me say this again, that. I continue to believe and and the city's gonna partner with you on this, that. In addition to just housing someone. And per perhaps even helping them out with some of their 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 challenges in life. There's another pathway to where they don't have to have subsidized housing. How do I get people in their lives? Um, and this is again where the lived experience coalition, there's some work that I want to continue to do with them. I think they are. They're part of that answer on how they can continue to be productive. In their life. And I think quite frankly, I I heard Mark say that. You know, you're not a public safety agency. Heck, you may not even be a. Life-saving agency and just a homelessness agency. But I would disagree. And I think that all of the experiences that someone have while they're homeless. Which is safety, which is self-optimizing, is part of what we can own together. And whether we are chartered to do that or not. I think it's the right thing to do and not just stick someone in. Uh, house and say, hey, we've done our job. And I'm not saying you're saying that, but I think our plan should address the diversion piece. I'll I'll stop there.
Good, thank you. Mayor, um Alexis, you want to continue or? Those parts that we can get to council members. Uh, Balducci's. Answers. Did you have any other presentation slides? I'm sorry.
I I do, but I do happen to see another hand and I want to make sure we we hear from Councilmember.
I I'm happy to wait. If you've got some more slides to go through.
The the slides pivot a bit into the next steps on revision process. And so I feel like if there's feedback writ large on the plan, this is probably the appropriate time.
Very good. Uh, appreciate that. Um. I uh have had some uh back and forth with, um, well, I haven't. Uh, Council Central staff has had some back and forth with um R H A staff. Um, around um some of the the public comment received about the city's investments. In um tiny homes and the recognition that. Um, the five-year plan identifies a particular number um as as projections based on. Um, your your methodology to determine what the housing gap is for each housing type. Um, the number I think that um was identified uh as a result of that methodology. Um, is a number that is smaller than um what the total number would be if the funds. Provided uh by in the in the mayor's proposed budget and then uh the council's adopted budget. That that um that that total number of tiny homes that would be built with all of those dollars would exceed the three eighty-four. So I'm just wondering, um, I've 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 heard from staff that that um. The, there is no intention to um remove any tiny house uh tiny house units. Um, from the current stock, um, in that there's a an intention to fully use the the money. That the mayor and council uh provided in. The in the budget. And I'm just wondering whether or not we can expect that to be a clarification within uh the next iteration of the plan. Or whether or not um there's an amendment, I mean, uh Alexis, you're probably gonna get to this, whether or there's an amendment process that we uh that we need to work up or. How how to move that um that shared expectation um forward. Thank you.
May I?
Yes, go ahead to you.
Um, thank you, Councilmember. Yes, I, so, um. We uh do not have any intention of of forcing the math to be reality over what.
we uh do not have any intention of of forcing the math to be reality over what already exists. And and as I uh was saying earlier in response to something that, you know, Councilmember Val Ducci raised, um you know, the we're not in a position to take things away, right? So so while the, you know, similarly around, you know, talking about congregate shelters, for example, like the authority has no plan to close en masse anything. Um because that's not the, that is simply not the position that we are in. Um and uh what we will do is, you know, for example, um with our our existing congregant facilities, we will work with them uh and our uh lived experience community so that they can be like have the elements, right? That folks are responding to when they are choosing uh non-congregate settings, right? Inclusive of having your own space and, you know, some ability to store your things like these fundamentals. Um and similarly, we would not look to pull uh funding uh out of the existing uh THB stock or what has been funded um in order to make the make the the numbers in the math reflect what what's, you know, happening outside. And and certainly, um as with any agency, um we we are, you know, subject to to your appropriations. And so uh what you have provided us uh the money to do is what we will do.
Okay. Is there a continuation with the presentation as it stands on the five year? Continue.
Yes, I'm happy to jump back in. Thank you so much, Chair. So I'm going to take us to a bit around next steps. Perfect. So for the revision process, a key vehicle for evaluating proposed changes to the plan is a subcommittee of the implementation board. We're calling the system planning subcommittee. The role of this committee is to review staff recommendations on revisions to the five year plan and ultimately make a recommendation to the full implementation board in April as they're taking up their vote to send to the governing committee. And this group is currently slated to meet on Thursdays at three P M on a weekly basis, leading up to the April implementation board meeting. Um these meetings are open to the public. Um there's a meeting happening today. It has been specially noticed materials are available there. Um and with that, um a little bit more about, so when and how does this review process really look like? The subregional planning team has been um shepherding all of the feedback that we've received to date and is preparing a recommendation memo in partnership with other staff um around what are the revision proposed revisions, technical amendments to the five year plan um based on all of that feedback. That uh memo pops over to see for CEO review, but then bounces to the system planning subcommittee for deliberation over the weeks, um taking item by item and voting to a approve, amend and and adjust accordingly. The idea then being uh the subcommittee develops a a recommended version that would go to the full implementation board um to adopt or amend. And then during that same meeting, the board would be taking a a vote to recommend to the governing committee for consideration as well. And so we've mapped out on a on a weekly basis, some of the things that that subcommittee would be taking up. Um and so for our meetings today, um we're really focusing on implementation board specific feedback and also just operationally how the subcommittee will run over the company weeks. Similarly, for for next week, we'll be taking that up as well. Initial review of the staff memo is slated for um their first meeting in March. Um at the March meeting of the implementation board, there will be a formal establishment reevaluation of the subcommittee times um in recognition that the the subcommittee is um currently open for all implementation board members kind of operating as a committee of the whole type of model. And so evaluating with the board to see if we need to adjust the the time to allow for maximum participation in the subcommittee. And in the following weeks, we've uh mapped out that we'll be having a a schedule of uh proposed changes that the subcommittee will be taking up on a weekly basis. Um for example, at their uh March ninth meeting, taking up changes one through fifteen and walking through the legislative process. Um with a carve out of a couple of weeks at the the end uh to really make sure they're getting to a finalized recommending recommended version to go to the full implementation board. And with that, uh that concludes uh my presentation and happy to take any questions on this proposed revision process.
Yes, Councilmember Val Ducci, go ahead.
That's just easier. Thank you, Chair. Um so I'm still unclear, how is the governing board? What is the way that we put input into this process? Is it just today and again at the final vote in April or for what?
Currently, we've been, we've been mapping out the engagement primarily through the implementation board subcommittee. But something that we are um bringing forward for conversation today is largely how we can ensure alignment and connection with the governing committee caucuses. And so that is a topic for conversation today and would also like to get feedback here as well on how we can further integrate the governing committee into this process.
It does feel like there's a step or maybe two missing and I believe me, I am not advocating for long bureaucratic process here, but um I don't feel like we've really had an opportunity at our level to engage with the public feedback. This has just been a very high level overview and we don't know yet what you're going to do with that feedback. And there's more feedback being collected, I understand, which is good. And then there were several ideas voted here that may or may not may or may not, you know, fly, but the um but but how do we get feedback on that? And I'll just speaking for myself, I'm I'm sure I'm not done having ideas about this uh because I haven't even consulted with my counsel yet, which is going to happen. So it feels like there's a extra step for us and I don't know what exactly that looks like, but I I just want to put that out there. Thank you.
CEO Dome?
Um. I don't know if this uh, I think the Chair ready and I had the same thought at the same time. And so I don't know if this uh is what is um needed, Councilmember Val Ducci, but one way would be because it's a standing subcommittee. It is not limited to the implementation board members and its membership. Um and so we could certainly invite key members of uh governing committee staff. Um, you know, could, you know, we could invite uh Madeline, we could invite Deputy Mayor Washington or her designee. You know, Shannon Braddock or her designate, right? So that like the that the uh folks who you all work most closely with on this are also in that process moving forward. Um certainly open to that and also open to whatever is, I mean, like that is one solution. But if there's uh if that doesn't get it done, then we can revisit the process.
That might really help. If you would um put out that opportunity in a sort of fair way to everybody here, uh we'd certainly respond to it and probably take you up on it.
Okay. Um, we'll do that uh absolutely to start. I'm also hearing um concern that the um that coming back at your regularly scheduled April meeting to vote may not give you enough opportunity to then fully reengage with the material. Um, my uh uh thought would be we could do two meetings. Um and you know, sort of either one in April, one in and a special one in May or another special one in April. Um I will lift up that like that is often very difficult for this group from a scheduling perspective. Um and so the, you know, just the feasibility of that does seem relatively low. Um and that after that, your next regularly scheduled meeting, I believe, is in um June. Um which uh, you know, from a uh, I would have to double check, but from a legal standpoint because the authority is required to finalize a five year plan within eighteen months of operation. I'm not sure if that puts us to like either right up against the deadline or like slightly over. So I can, oh, Alexis is not, perhaps you've mapped that already, Alexis?
Think we'd be right up against the deadline.
Okay, so I would offer that also. I mean, like, you know, of course, like, you know, authority staff are are happy to go either one of those routes to make sure that this uh, you know, body feels that you've had the time to appropriately deliberate and like fully adopt the plan. Um but we will start by ensuring that staff are invited to the subcommittee. Um and then perhaps we can take the discussion of whether or not there's a special meeting or um a um uh, you know, if it's it's uh April deliberation, June vote um discussion uh with your individual offices. Does that work or would you like to talk it more as a group here?
Chair, I'm sorry, I'm just continuing to jump in here, but um my suggestion, and I don't know how realistic it is, to be honest, and I'm probably going to be really unpopular with some of my fellow committee members here is uh if I were you, I would try my best to find a date in May for a fallback meeting in case of need. Put it on our calendars and then hope we don't need it. That's that's probably what I would do.
Understood. We'll move forward with that plan then. Um and uh if anyone asked who came up with it, we did.
Oh, you can blame me. I'm happy to take it.
Hey, any more discussion? Well, I want to thank Alexis and your team from the K C I H A for this presentation and all the questions that were asked. At this mo, and so at this time, I want to thank the public for coming on today and for listening and being a part of this discussion with the executive with the uh governing committee. And uh we are going to move to executive session. And I do want to thank you. And so uh is there a motion to adjourn?
Uh pardon, sorry, Chair. Quick point of order. You can't, you have to, so you would have to motion to go into executive session for the next, at this point now, ten minutes or nine minutes because we do have to come back and formally adjourn the meeting in public.
Is there a motion to go into executive session?
Come on.
Is there a second? Second. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Any opposed? Motion is so carried. And so we will move into executive session um. And then we will return in ten minutes.
Um, and we'll send out links to a separate room. Correct, Taj?
Yes, that's correct. Um links were sent to your email addresses for the executive session. So please check your emails for that.
And and Taj, are you able to send uh Courtney Love, who's one of the L E C staffers uh to join?
Executive session cannot include staff.
I see. Thank you.
Okay. And what else is for me? Are we?
So we just return, we go to the link in ten minutes that we we reconvene at twelve, is that correct?
So, yeah, we will, we'll go to the other, the other room now and return uh at uh one one to the hour so we can formally adjourn.
Okay. So do I have to say we're adjourned or are we just moving or?
Nope, you just, you need to, you just need to follow the link to the other room.
All right. I'm sorry, the link is on the chat. Where's the link?
No, the link was sent to your email address.
Mayor, we can, uh Taj, can you send it to the mayor's scheduler, please?
I already did.
Okay, got it. See you in a few. Thank you.
Thank you all for being so patient with me, you know.
Of course, no problem, Chair. Um, you have your link and I see council members Lewis and McDermott. Do you all have what you need?
Yes.
Um, I'm still looking, but I I'm confident I'll be able to figure it out.
Chair, my suggestion would be to entertain a motion to adjourn.
Yes. Is there a second, there's a second?
Second, but I think you can adjourn without objection. You can just say without objection.
Without objection.
Good meeting all, thank you.